Good evening, I'd like to call order. This meeting of the Board of Education, August 27, 2018, 7:00 PM. Mr. Giuffre, would you please call roll?
Mrs. Barber, Ms. Choice.
Here.
Dr. Heiss.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
And Mr. Furman.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These wheels really move, be careful. These chairs are really, really moving. You have exits, both where you came in and down here on either side. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Mr. Giuffre.
Ms. Choice.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Furman.
Yes. Item 3.1 through 3.3 are the approval of minutes as indicated.
I move the -- sorry. I move the approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting, July 10th, approval of the Policy Committee meeting, July 19th, and approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, July 23rd.
Second. Mr. Giuffre.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Ms. Choice.
Yes.
And Ms. Furman.
Yes. Item 4.1, correspondence. Mr. Prebles.
Yes. Thank you. I have a letter from the Ohio Academy of Science in the state of Ohio, from Columbus, on August 22, 2018. The Ohio Academy of Science today selected 61 Ohio schools and 672 teachers to receive the Governor's Thomas Edison Award for Excellence in STEM Education and Student Research for their accomplishments during the 2017-18 school year. Each school will receive a special Governor's Award certified -- excuse me, certificate, and each teacher will receive a complimentary membership to the Ohio Academy of Science. The Technology Division of the Ohio Development Services Agency funded this particular program. And for those in the audience, the Academy of Science was founded in 1891 in the state of Ohio. The Ohio Academy of Science is a membership-based, volunteer-driven, not-for-profit organization. The academy is the leading organization in Ohio to foster curiosity, discovery, innovation, and problem-solving skills in Ohio. So we'd like to thank our two high schools for being nominated and receiving this award, and also for teachers in the classrooms who also received the award as well. It's a great accomplishment for our school district. Congratulations to everyone involved.
Mr. Giuffre.
Ms. Furman, we not only received communication or correspondence from the Honorable Dusty Rhodes, we also received quite a sizable check. And this is from the collection of cost for real estate taxes. And over the years, Mr. Rhodes has found it available to return back to the municipalities and school districts, a portion of that monies, which was, this time, $14 million unspent from that fund. And Forest Hills received, on the 2nd of this month, $479,319.72.
Would you do that every month, please?
Jim, real quick. This isn't correspondence, but as the past Chair of the Blue Jacket District, I want to welcome Boy Scout Troop 112, our visitors this evening. I understand you're all here to work on your Citizenship Merit Badge. Welcome, I hope you enjoy the meeting. 112 was my troop when I was a scout, so thank you for being here and enjoy the meeting.
Thank you. Board members, any correspondence? Item 4.2 is the procedure for public commentary. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There was a time in the meeting for public participation, as indicated in the agenda under public commentary. Individuals who like to share their opinion, comments concerning a topic on the Board's agenda should list the agenda item on a public participation sheet available, I think, in the bathroom. In the back of the room, sign your name, include your address and telephone number, and provide the sheet up front here, if you would, please. And you'll be recognized during the public commentary section. Comments should be limited to three minutes. Item 5.1, Mr. Fellows, we have a graduation.
And I do not see Sarah, but this is always such an exciting time for Mr. Spencer and myself. We have one candidate for graduation this evening, her name is Sarah Dougmush, and if she were here, I think she would be totally happy with me saying, you know, things did not go the way that Sarah had planned at the end of the school year, and the most important thing that she learned over that time was just the perseverance that it takes to finish strong. And what I had planned to share with Sarah was just a heartfelt message around the importance of perseverance and stamina. Life often sets challenges before us, and it's often failures that we experience, and setbacks and that kind of thing. But it's what we do in those kind of crucible moments that make all the difference in terms of what our character is. And so Sarah has persevered over the course of the summer months in her coursework, and I'm very pleased to be standing here today. So at this time, the Superintendent recommends that the Board approve the granting of a high school diploma to Sarah Dougmush.
We have a motion, please?
I make a motion that the Board approve the granting of a high school diploma to Sarah Dougmush. Did I pronounce that correctly?
You got it.
Okay.
Second. Mr. Giuffre.
Ms. Choice.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
And Ms. Furman.
Yes. Congratulations, Sarah.
Excellent, thank you.
Item 6, public commentary. As indicated, limited to three minutes. First up is Nicole Whiting.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Nicole Whiting. I'm a parent in the district and resident, also an alum of Anderson High School. I would like to read a letter that was sent to one of our neighbors from a gentleman named Trevor Roberts. I am writing on -- I'm sorry. I am writing this on behalf of Alumni for Change, Greater Anderson Promotes Peace, and all those in favor of changing the team name at Anderson High School. My name is Trevor Roberts, and I am an enrolled member of the Fort Peck Cinnaboin in Sioux Tribes of Montana. I also serve as the multicultural club president, student body president of the Associated Students of Lower Columbia College, student liaison for the Diversity and Equity Committee, and the student representative for the Washington State Legislation Student Engagement Network. My father, an enrolled Hopi, is the Senior Intergovernmental Affairs Liaison for the Alaska Native Tribal Health Consortium, the second-largest employer in the state of Alaska. My mother, who is the tribal health director for the Cowlets Tribe, is also an enrolled member of our tribe, a tribe most often used to wrongfully and stereotypically depict Native Americans across the country. All of us find the use of native imagery in sports, mascots, and logos very offensive and respectfully recommend that the Board of Education retire the current team name and mascot before the new school year begins. I come from a very prestigious and well-respected family among Indian country that features chiefs, Olympic medalists, and heroes of war. All of these accomplishments are reduced by the environment that native team names and mascots propagate. These scenarios that have played out countless times are uncomfortable at best and fatal at worst for native peoples. There is absolutely no honor for my people in these sports teams. If there is, I have yet to be on the receiving end of that feeling whenever I see somebody patting their hand to their mouth or doing the tomahawk chop, all while disrespecting our eagle feathers and war bonnets. I thank you for your time and consideration in changing the team name and mascot of Anderson High School. I know that the Board will make the only right decision in changing to the much better name of the Comets and use this as a learning experience for all. Pilameya Ampetu Washte Yuha Po. Thank you, have a nice day. Trevor Roberts. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Beaman.
There's a popular TED Talk about the danger of a single story, and the gist of that talk is that we have only -- if we have only a single story about a group of people, then we project our assumptions on them, and it's especially easy for us to assume that we are better than they are. The deep political divide we are experiencing here and throughout the nation inspires one set of single stories, but I'm more concerned about the single story that a mascot creates. And the letter from Mr. Roberts shows some of that impact. The logo and sports team associations create a single story about Native Americans. They tell us that Native Americans are men who wear feathers and sport outlandish hairstyles. They are always only warriors. And while they may have many admirable qualities, they are never associated with the kinds of things that concern the Native Americans that I know. These are things like being a good family member and a good member of one's community, having a great sense of humor, learning and passing on traditional knowledge, and participating fully in contemporary life. Voting, doing your job, going to school, teaching your children, all those things that all of us do. The single story is not consciously passed on. It's a set of assumptions so ingrained that the children absorb it and adults carry it on without even realizing that they only have a single story. To counter a single story, we need to know a wide range of the stories that people tell about themselves. The route I know to understanding that wide range looks like this. I've attended a school where the Indian mascot had been retired, and Native American studies had been incorporated into many disciplines. From that, I now know Native American artists, poets, novelists, playwrights, and filmmakers. I urge the school board to change the mascot and set our students on a path to a richer understanding of what it means to be a Native American today in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Looney.
So this is why you don't use a human being as a mascot. During the June 12th branding meeting, Albert "Running Wolf" Ortiz was mentioned by name by a committee member as a great guy. And the man himself shows up to the June 25th meeting, and what happens? You have him thrown out. Why is that? Why is his name good enough for June 12th, but the man himself has to be run out of here two weeks later? Why is that? What changed? Was it because Albert was rude and interrupted the meeting? No. I think on June 12th, a few people were rude and interrupted the meeting, and they got exactly what they wanted, so it couldn't have been rudeness. Now, I don't think it was because the people on June 12th were white and Albert was Native. I don't think that. I think you were just intimidated by the number of people on June 12th. That's not what it looks like. That's not what Albert took away. That's not what his friends took away. That's not what people took away. They saw white people allowed to disrespect democracy, to disrespect you. And they see natives thrown out by law enforcement. It's not a good look. That does not --
Engage.
Mr. Looney, would you please stay at his podium cell? And you know what he was trying to tell you? That after 80 years of theoretically teaching students to treat natives with honor and integrity, actual natives are being harassed and insulted and repented and disrespected. What if he was telling the truth? Where is your honor and integrity then? If you want to honor Albert "Running Wolf" Ortiz, then respect him and respect his wishes. And if you don't, then don't use him as a mascot.
Thank you. Ruth Hardy.
Good evening, I'm Ruth Hardy, and this is Pinky Kokoshus. We are with the League of Women Voters of the Cincinnati area, and Pinky is our co-president. The League right now is working very hard to provide voters with the nonpartisan information they'll need in order to make meaningful choices on Election Day, which is Tuesday, November 6th. We do produce a publication each year, it's called The Voter Guide, and you can pick this up at your local Hamilton County Library, or it's sometimes included in the city beat. And you can also get the information online at vote411.org. Our local unit of the League, the Anderson Unit, is sponsoring a Candidates Night, which will be held at the Anderson Center on Wednesday, September 26th, from 7:00 PM until 9:00 PM. And we're calling it Your Vote, Your Future. This nonpartisan event is free and open to the public. We've invited Hamilton County candidates running for judge for the Ohio Court of Appeals because we know it's not easy to get information on the judicial candidates, and as Election Day nears, voters are sometimes frantic to educate themselves, or may even give up and not vote on the judicial candidates. We've also invited the candidates for US Congress District 2, and candidates running for the Ohio General Assembly Races, Senate District 7, and House District 27. We think these General Assembly Races will be of particular interest to parents of the Forest Hill students due to the controversy over school funding. Attendees will have an opportunity to ask their legislators or their candidates where they stand on education issues, especially with regard to oversight and accountability of e-schools and charter schools. We hope you all can join us for this event, and I'll pass out some flyers with the details, or you can go to lvwcincinnati.org for more information. Pinky?
Yes, I'd like to mention also another thing that the League is doing on Monday, October 8th, not in our neighborhood, but in conjunction with the Urban League, Cincinnati Bar Association, and the Women's City Club, they're going to present Who Are You to Judge a Judicial Candidate Forum, highlighting candidates for common pleas and court of appeals. This event begins at 6:00 PM, and is held at the Urban League on Redding Road. And I would also like to talk to you about the importance of being registered to vote, and to give you some important dates. One is that voter registration ends on October 9th. And you can vote at the Board of Election, I will always say Board of Education, but get it at the Board of Election. You can also vote online now. And the other issue that I'm sure you've heard about is that there was a big purge done by the Secretary of State in 2012, and they purged people who didn't return the card and didn't vote for a couple federal elections. But the issue that we would like to emphasize is to make sure that you aren't one of those people, and that you can go online and make sure that your registration is up to date, and they'll tell you. It's very easy to just go to the Board of Election, Hamilton County Board of Election, and they'll tell you where you vote, sometimes voting places change, and if there was any problem. I'd advise you to do it before the October 9th, however. So that's one of the messages that the League is -- it's very important to us to make sure that people are registered to vote, and that when you go to vote, you're at the right place and your registration is in order. And once again, we hope you'll take advantage of a couple things. We do this every year, it's called They Represent Us, and we also hope you'll come to both of the events and learn about the candidates. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Unless you all think I let them talk over, they filled out two sheets and split their time appropriately. No exception.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Item 7.1, updates from the Superintendent. Mr. Prebles?
Yes, I wanted to let the Board know that this morning, we welcomed back all of the school district's employees for our 2018-19 convocation ceremony. We had some special awards given out this morning. Jack Gruber from Christ Hospital was with us, and we presented Christ Hospital with the Friends of Education Award for their generous offering of the parking space so that Anderson High School students could utilize that in the 17-18 school year, and so that we could have a safe parking arrangement for our students. So Christ Hospital received an award. We also presented a gentleman by the name of Bob Vanderwood, a special award for his service in the school district and the many things he does from the maintenance side of things to ensure that students have safe and secure environments. We provided an honor to Joanne Thompson, who is a district employee, has been a district employee for 36.9 years, our longest-tenured staff member in the district. And we put out the 18-19 goals as related to our strategic vision, 7th and 8th grade master schedule refinement, secondary flexible learning opportunity expansion, internet access for all students in the district, learning design specialist model for K-6 teachers, cultural proficiency expansion in our school district to create a team to grow a shared understanding of diversity and cultural advocacy, MTSS, which is Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, which is related to differentiation in the classroom, community partnership expansion, which we have had for a couple of years, and now have a collaborative working arrangement with the Forest Hills Foundation and our administrative team, teaching team, to develop better, more vibrant community partnerships, expansions for our students so that there are experiences outside of the school, traditional school setting. And we do know that as we look to the future, we're going to be discussing additional operational resources with our staff and with our community. So those are the things that we have on the docket in the 2018-19 school year, and we're off to a great start, at least at this point. And we had performances by Maddox Elementary students, as well as the Forest Hills Combined Band, where marching bands from Anderson High School and Turpin High School have come together, and 235 members strong played today for us at the convocation. So that is my update for you to see me.
Thank you, Mr. Prebles. Any questions from anyone? Item 8.1 is a matter that we will take up an executive session pursuant to appropriate motion. Item 8.2, Board Discussion. Anything? Item 9.1, Change Order for Anderson High School Business Operations. Mr. Broadwater.
Thank you. And before I go through the change orders, I will let the Board know that the amount of change orders, this does go back to May. There are some change orders May, June, July, as well as August. As you know, the push was to make sure our students are in the classrooms, and I'm happy to say that we got our last permit today for students to have occupancy at Anderson High School. Turpin received that last week, so for all our students at Anderson and Turpin, we're good to go. And what I would like to do, because we have such a vast array of the change orders specifically at Anderson and Turpin, is take a little bit of time to vet through those with the Board, just to kind of explain those to you, so that if you have any further questions after hearing them, you have that opportunity. But first, 9.1, the change order for Anderson High School site. This is a change order as a result of the change of scope at the Anderson High School site, and the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the change order submitted by Performance Construction in the amount of $5,530, and these were for various changes of the layout design on the Anderson site.
I move to approve item 9.1, Change Order for the Anderson High School Site.
A second.
Mr. Giuffre.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Ms. Choice.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Furman.
Abstain. And proceed with 9.2.
Very good. For 9.2, these are the change orders for Anderson High School renovations. Change Order 30, and what you're also going to notice, as you saw looking through those last week, as well as today, that change orders may have quite a few items in them because of the expediency at which we wanted to get these through and get our kids into classes. But what I want to do is highlight some of the major ones. The first one, under Change Order 30, the entire change order is for $25,715. The first large one is Bullet 18, which is $11,961. That is to add what was missed on the design to the science storage room, which is right by the administrative offices. What was happening is the storage area, which is a large storage area, sometimes there are chemicals in there as well, but there was no HVAC, there was no air or heat in there, and that was the revision for Bullet 18.
That wasn't on the drawings?
Correct. For Bullet 19, it was to replace door frame and door swing in the directions of Stair 2. Stair 2 is the stairwell in the middle of the first floor, which students will empty out during school. It's right by the new elevator. The issue with the fire inspection, it was determined that that had to be a firewall, and we had to have it raided. The way it was designed, the door was not going to do that, and it also was not going to be appropriate for students as they go through the door. So therefore, the redesign is such that there are magnet holds, magnetic holds, so the students can get through the doors more readily, and it does meet the fire code. So again, that was for $5,814, and that was a redesign due to the fire inspection. The next one I would point out is the conduit for cabling, which is $4,486. What that is, it provided conduit in the connector bridge, which goes out to the new multipurpose building. The original plans called for a cable tray to take all of the cabling out to the multipurpose building. That was pulled out during the value engineering, and it was determined that we needed to have a way to get our cable over. So what we went with was conduit in that connector bridge, which was the most economical, as well as it's hidden, so it's not in the way of students or anything like that. So that was the change order there. Last one, we have additional pipe cover is for $1,141, and that was to cover pipes that were exposed, that the concern would be the students would be able to have access to them. So that was missed in the design as well. Moving on to Change Order 31, and in Change Order 31, that is $28,873. I would point out that Bullet 20, which was for magnetic doors, we pulled those off on another doorway and actually used them on the one we just talked about, and therefore we received a credit for $892. The next we have, the next two relocate storm in 3A, and 3A is the new physics room. It was for $3,126. And patching and staining of the floor is $3,147. The original design did not work for the STEM class, which is the physics classroom, Mr. Rodriguez's classroom. So at the time, it was determined that in order to make this more accessible for our students in the STEM program, that we would make that change. So that is those two values. Next, larger one, $5,374, Bullet 23. When you look at Bullet 23, the kitchen and the HVAC revisions were due to existing structural elevations that were missed during the design. So those needed to be placed in so that we could get the air conditioning into the cafeteria as it moves in there next summer. Next one, looking at the dock door frame for $2,524. The dock at Anderson High School, that door frame is an original door frame, is extremely beat up because that's where all the deliveries are. But in order to have the security magnetic systems work, that door frame needed to be replaced, and that was at our request. Next, I will throw out the $10,841 was to demo a row of masonry and replace that masonry. This is the entire storefront of Anderson High School on Forest Road. So we had talked about this earlier, but So, we had talked about this earlier, but it was not designed appropriately for the windows to be able to rest on the masonry that was there previously. This was the redesign so that we could do the storefront which looks very, very nice. But that is the redesign of that. For Change Order 32, that amount is $27,260. If I were to look at the large ones, $4,978 was to demo a cement wall between rooms 228 and 230. That is on the second floor. Below that wall, there was another cement wall. All of the other rooms in that area only had a first floor cement wall. As they went to demo that first floor cement wall, they found that there was a cement wall on the second floor and they stopped. But with that, we had to do a change order for $4,978 for the demo of that wall that was missed in the original design. Next, looking at $2,191, frame and drywall columns around electric and plum pipes in rooms 101 and 103. That is in the science rooms. If you walk through the science labs, you would see that there were poles that were exposed in the design. There was nothing mentioned to frame those out and put drywall on them so we could close out that system. So therefore, that is that change order. Next, $2,258 metal cabinets to cover the hose bibs. The hose bibs are on the exterior of the building. It was, they were covered initially as the demo went through and the hose bib, new hose bibs were placed in. It was, found out that metal cabinets were not called out on the original design to be replaced. Therefore, we did have to cover those hose bibs and that is for the $2,258. Next, the rear curtain wall by the elevator shaft is to rework the existing curtain wall. That was for $8,946, similar to the front storefront, the front curtain wall. There was a design error in the rear curtain wall by the elevator shaft that needed to be reworked and that is that value. Next, the good news is, as we went through and vetted out all of the gas lines, there was a four-inch gas line in Area 4 and 6 that was called out to be replaced as Bob Vanderwood, myself and a couple other experts looked at the gas line and it was deemed that it was appropriate and did not need to be replaced. Therefore, we have a credit of $8,879. Also, the next one there is a credit for not installing the transfer duct. In the same area, it was determined that we did not need a transfer duct in that environment and that is a credit of $1,116. Next one there is a charge for $1,237. What we did as they went through and demoed through the hallways of Anderson High School, we were able to salvage 13 lockers that were fairly new, probably about five years old. We opted to save those lockers and replace them in an area where we had some older lockers that were in repair, in need of repair. Therefore, the $1,237 was to install the lockers that we had salvaged. Looking at the next large one there is $8,299. That is the removal of a cement wall that was in the back near the elevator and again, that was something that was missed in the design that needed to take place in order to have that elevator shaft ready to go. Next one I will look at is the $2,587 change order. That was to remove the tile and reinstall the ties to the existing masonry wall. This was in back by the elevator as well. Remove, the next one is remove spoils and furnish and install topsoil at sidewalk and baseball field. That is up by the baseball field where if you noticed, there was a pipe put in, a water pipe put in and it needed to be finished off with topsoil for the drainage. So that is that change order. And I will now move on to Change Order 33 which is for $1,917. The two items that I would review there, Bulletin 22, as we went through and reviewed, this is going to be in the next phase which is the performing arts phase, it's the bandroom. As we looked at the bandroom doors as designed, they were 36-inch doors and we had some instruments that required 42-inch doors to get them through. So we redesigned such that we could get our instruments through. That is $7,567. And the good news is, the next one that we have is a credit for $7,226 and that was, we did not remove the cavity mat at the multipurpose building. A cavity mat is what you put behind the cement or the masonry. It was determined that that was not necessary, that was in the design. The way it was designed, we did not need the cavity mat on that building. So we took the credit with that. So with that, that ends our Anderson change orders. The superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Travelers Bond and Specialty Insurance in the amount of $83,765.
Thanks for that detail. Any questions from any of the board members on any of those change orders?
Just in general, a number of times you mentioned something was missed or it was not on the drawings or that type of thing. Is there any relief, not here, and I'm not asking you to go through specifics, but in general, is there any relief coming to us for that or is it a situation where it was going to be, happen anyway, just because it wasn't discovered, it's still our expense?
To say there's relief, I couldn't answer that. What I could say is there is a contingency in the program because of items that arise like this. I will say that we are under the contingency at Anderson High School, but also we have quite a bit left. We do have a lot left at Anderson High School with the performing arts. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but what I can tell you is, part of the program, we obviously knew you weren't going to catch everything in the design. You hate to hear we missed it in the design, we missed it in the design, but when you're talking about renovating a building from 1961, that is going to happen.
And by and large, when we've talked about these issues before, they are matters that, things that would have hadn't been done anyhow, they're just, they just weren't part of an initial bid because they weren't part of the design.
Right.
At worst, what you typically, or what we typically talked about anyhow is not being part of the bid process. You don't know whether you did or did not get that cost advantage that might have come to bid in.
Industry standard, when you ask, they would say it's probably 10% that it may be costing you. But to your point, you are getting that programming in that building. It is adding value to the building. It's just you want to make sure that it fits inside the contingency that's been developed.
Thank you.
Yep. For 9.3, it's change orders for the Anderson High School detention pond area. Change Order 1 is for $42,163. What we found as we were going through the detention pond, there is, we have found some cement blocks, we've found some different areas there that almost looks like somebody had dumped something there many, many years ago. And so as we are going through and doing the detention, that is to go through and do the undercutting and remove so that we have good usable soil there. For Change Order 2, it is $46,394. That is the sanitary line replacement which is $46,394. The original, we had originally said that it was going to be close to about $35,000. Again, as they got into that, they found some debris and that is what took it to the $46,000. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Evans Landscaping Incorporated in the amount of $88,557.
Is that on, I'm sorry, is that on time and material tickets? Is that how they get them?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, and we receive those daily.
Mr. Broadwater?
Yes.
I think in that one also, it doesn't state when the company that we were working with that $46,000 even though if you're higher than the estimate, it's greater than yours or what it could have been had the equipment immediately staged which was somewhere in the $100,000 range.
Correct.
So, some of the technical things that happened behind the scenes, to keep that number where it is now, we got some good luck there with the company that was already on site.
We did, yeah. And to that point, because the equipment was already there, when we found the issue, there's always a large charge to mobilize equipment. Equipment's already there, so it worked out as best as possible. The next one for 9.4, 9.4 is a change order as we look at the HVAC and the HVAC for the district-wide program. It's a motion to approve the change orders submitted by Johnson Controls in the amount of $26,574 as presented. The change orders are a result of change in scope at Anderson High School and Wilson Elementary. So the first change order I have down there is Change Order 2. It's at $22,574 at Wilson Elementary. As I explained to the board in the document that they received, this is for equipment that had water damage. We received a D DOCS earlier in the year and this is just to come back and do it properly and so therefore, it's a wash. For Change Order 3, that is for $4,000 at Anderson High School. The cooling tower factory control wiring, $4,000. It is for JCI, Johnson Controls, to connect controls on the cooling tower. The cooling tower had flow sensors that came with it from the factory but were not connected to the control panel, therefore, that needed to be performed. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Johnson Controls Incorporated in the amount of $26,574. Okay, next, we have 9.5 which is the change order for the pre-purchase of district-wide lighting at Turpin High School. This is a motion to approve the change order submitted by Gray Bar Electric in the amount of $1,079.60. As the board is aware, the district has been purchasing lighting through Gray Bar outside of the program because we were able to get better pricing. This change order is because a few lights were added at Turpin High School in the cafeteria and we were short, I believe it was five, five lights. So that is to purchase those five lights and finish up the Turpin cafeteria. The superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Gray Bar Electric in the amount of $1,079.60. Okay, next, we have the change orders for Turpin High School which is 9.6. Again, what I would like to do is go through this a little bit with a little bit more fine comb so that the board has questions on these. As you've looked at them, you may do that. Change Order 49 is for $22,155, the large one there. $5,467 was to install electric door hardware that was not previously called out and what that does is it gets power to a door that there's a card reader there, so this is a safety and security issue. Once there's power to the door in the security system that we have, anybody that's on that security system and viewing, they can tell if that door is open or not. So that was the one door that we did not have as part of our security system and so we did that. Looking at the next one for $2,388 where it says install concealed sprinkler heads. As you went into the gymnasium, our athletic director had concerns. We looked at it and the sprinkler heads had been installed and were not completely concealed. They were, you could see the sprinkler pipe with the sprinkler heads right there and they were at about, I would say, seven feet and they were right behind the backboard. So we could see where that was going to be a problem where we would have issues with the ball hitting the sprinkler head and once you blow up a sprinkler head, it's pretty expensive to go through and replace that. So this was along the baseline to go through and install concealed sprinkler heads in the Turpin gym. Provide replacement door frames for $2,193. Provide replacement lighting controls for $3,093. Those two go together. The multipurpose gym at Turpin High School right now has eight classrooms staged for our eight math teachers. The classrooms that are being built up on the top floor which are the math classrooms, in order for those teachers to move into those classrooms, they need door frames and they need lighting. It was missed as part of the different phasing. Therefore, what we have done is gone ahead and installed new frames and new lighting and then as we decommission the multipurpose gym, those door frames and that lighting, we are going to keep as attic stock for district and the lighting, I can tell you, is going to go pretty quickly. We'll use that throughout the district. And the door frames, it'll be good to have an attic stock of about eight door frames which are the same at both high schools. So it's in order for our kids to get into the classroom quicker. Looking at the next one, Room C, O14 outlets and refeed the maintenance. This was miscellaneous unforeseen electrical items that were missed in the design that we had to make sure we had in there in order for technology to work. And the last one there for $3,680, it was to add door contacts and those door contacts, let me make sure I've got, yeah, are to the auditorium. The auditorium door is an older door. In order to have that as part of the security, we did not add a new door like the other one. We needed to make that part of the security system as well. So that is the $3,680. Change Order 50 is $43,583. It's a short explanation, but it's a big change order. This explanation is, it was for the code, added damper revisions. In other words, the design did not call for dampers originally. What the fire department, as the fire chief came through and as Hamilton County Building came through, they required these dampers simply because it's a damper in your duct work. If there happened to be a fire in an area, you need to have those dampers able to shut off the smoke so it does not get through the rest of the building. So that change order, while it's an easy explanation, it's one of the larger ones we have. For Change Order 51, that is for $4,479. I would point out Bulletin 19 revisions, that is technology changes per the district so that we could get the overhead projectors and TVs into a couple classrooms. The D DOCS that we have, we deleted Area C North gutters for $2,558 credit and Bulletin 20 called for a gutter and downspouts which again, we received a credit for $2,208. Reason for that is they were deemed unnecessary once we'd gotten in the new, the new downspouts so we did not use those. The kitchen isolation water valve was for $2,512. The kitchen isolation water valve allows our cooks or maintenance or custodians, if there is an issue, to be able to shut the water off where it needs to be turned off in the kitchen. For Change Order 52, that is Bulletin 18 and RFI 315 response. That is for $37,357. And again, it's an easy explanation, but it's a large one. We had made the board aware of the fact that there was a brick wall at the, at Turpin High School, it was in the social studies area where the brick wall was not attached to the flooring, therefore structurally, it was deemed not safe and therefore, we need to get in and do emergency structural repairs for that second floor support and that is what Bulletin 18 is for $37,357. Okay, moving on. Change Order 53 for $34,761. Looking at that, we revised the gym sprinkler and added drywall and the bulkhead. That was the large ticket item there for $28,684. What you would find is throughout the building, the sprinkler heads, if you've seen sprinkler heads that have the circular cap on them where you really can't see the sprinkler heads, were throughout the building except for this level and the ceiling at the level which is the lower level, the science area, the ceiling was at about seven feet five inches. So the concern was those sprinkler heads were exposed to students and there were quite a few, probably over 50 sprinkler heads that needed to make sure that we had those concealed and therefore, that is that change order. The add bulkhead and ceiling to corridor is really the same explanation. It was the sprinklers and the sprinkler line that we needed to conceal. For Change Order 54, it was to add a fire-rated door and frame to the opening and opening which is $6,903. In the original design, it was deemed that this did not have to be a fire-rated door. As the fire chief went through and the fire department went through, they required that this is a fire-rated door and therefore, it has been changed. Next is the add the rolling fire shutter at corridor H113. That was for $6,695. The original design called out for, as you go into Turpin High School and took a right where the athletic boosters would sell, there was a booth there, it's been removed. That stairwell going up into the learning commons, it was called out to have masonry put in there and close off that hall. and close off that hallway. Mr. Spencer and myself, when you look at the flow of students in that building, that would not be a very good flow in terms of how students are going to get in and out through the learning commons. And the learning commons is going to be used as a pathway over to the other classrooms. Therefore, the fire shutter, instead of putting up masonry, the fire shutter will close automatically if there's a fire, and therefore, creating the firewall. For change order 55, that is for $11,634. One I will point out there is provide new door and hardware for elevator equipment room opening. That's $2,450. And that was something, again, that was called out for safety and security with our Hamilton County Building Department. Next is repair existing dishwasher exhaust duct for $847, which is pretty self-explanatory. Next, we have kitchen ductwork revision for $2,861. And that basically was to go through and revise the ductwork for the kitchen so that the exhaust would work properly in the kitchen area. And the last one there is very similar. Area B drywall revisions, windowheads, bulkhead, and chases for $5,476. That again, was something that was missed in the design that the bulkheads had to be replaced in. That was the social studies area. So, looking at the change orders for Turpin, the superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Monarch Construction Company in the amount of $167,567. And I would say for Turpin, we are nearing the end, I believe, about the end of October. We probably will be there. I think we're getting there.
Board members, have any questions for Mr. Broadwater? I want to see if you follow any things. First of all, I'm sorry you all had to sit through such long explanation on these change orders. Mr. Broadwater has literally been killing himself all summer getting us this information and trying to get sure all the construction was done. Some of this information got to the board a little bit later than typical, through no fault of Mr. Broadwater. So, we asked him to go through it in detail for us this evening because we didn't get a chance to do it over the weekend, which is what we typically do. So, thank you for that. The other thing I want to say is, and Scott, this includes you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. For those of you that know, I'm surprised, for those of you who don't know, more likely, we really were putting a lot, investing a lot, getting this work done at the schools over the summer, particularly at Anderson High School. Mr. Broadwater has literally killed himself, day in and day out, making sure these projects stayed on pace. You can tell from the detail he went through, as he went through each and every single one of these change orders, that he knows what's going on out there. And we have put this in his hands, and he has carried this project on his shoulders to the point where we've already got our occupancy permit at Anderson. And that's really a week early, folks. It's really quite incredible. And so, Turpin's going well, and that's going to be done about a month, maybe two months early.
Couple months.
And Anderson, the parking is great. And for the first time in the history of Anderson High School, the buses aren't going to be there, and the kids are going to be able to park where they ought to be able to park. And the learning spaces are all going to have air conditioning. These are exciting times. Thank you, Mr. Broadwater.
Thank you. We're going to move on to 9.8, which is payment in lieu of transportation. And every year at this time, we have this for those students that may not be using our district transportation. And the superintendent recommends the board approve the resolution for payment in lieu of transportation for the 2018-2019 school year, as shown in the attachment that you have received. For 9.9, that is transportation bus stops for this school year. And again, this is the time of the year that we do this. The superintendent recommends the board approve the bus stops for the 2018-2019 school year, as well as the authority to designate or relocate subsequent school bus stops designated by the board to the superintendent or designate, as shown in the attachment. Okay, I think we are ready for 9.10, which is, we'll make it a quick facilities update. And the facilities update is we got kids in school come Tuesday. That's a good thing. The first picture I had to throw on there is one that was a long time coming. Mr. Fellows, Mr. Fellows still here? You see what that picture, that's, yeah, it's a parking lot. Parking lot. So, Anderson High School, I can tell you, having been the principal there a few years back, and knowing the principals that have been there probably 20 or 25 years before, this has always been a problem, to separate our buses with student drivers and parent drivers and student walkers and field trips and athletic events. So, we're very, very excited. We were so excited, as soon as we knew we could do it, we had the spots numbered, and we've got 186 spots right now. It's going to be a temporary design. Working with the township, Steve Severs and Paul Drury have been tremendous to work with. They allowed us to do a temporary design, and we'll take this year, throughout this year, to determine what's the best flow for this parking lot for our kids, as well as our adults. So, the good news is, we've got extra parking at Anderson High School. Next slide is, I want to give you a kind of a snapshot. The picture on the right is what a hallway looks like as it's getting sanded down so that we could put down the VC, the vinyl flooring, has no lighting on, the ceiling pads aren't necessarily in. And then, as you look to the left, you'll see a hallway where the vinyl's been put in, the ceiling pad's close there, but the floor is waxed. And I can tell you that it looks tremendous in Anderson High School. Right now, the hallways might be full of pallets because we've got a bunch of furniture being put together and being installed in classrooms. I can tell you, walking through the high school today, I saw a lot of excited teachers, some excited administrators, and it's because of the board's support, as well as the community's support with that 2014 bond issue. We're starting to see how many great learning environments we have for our kids at all of our, all of our schools. The next slide there is, it's, the top is a classroom. It's got the floor covered because it's been waxed, and we've been making sure that we keep it in pristine condition, ready to go. And on the bottom, we've got a wax floor, and that's a picture of, I believe it's Nate Lynch's classroom, but it's got the furniture staged, ready to go. As soon as the classroom is waxed, ready to go, we are moving that furniture in, and we're ready, we should have all the furniture by Wednesday, ready to go in Anderson High School. Turpin, this is your social studies classroom, one of your social studies classrooms. I threw this one in because I believe this is one of the classrooms that was affected by the structural piece that we had talked about, the brick wall not being attached to the floor. So, that is the social studies classroom. Next, you have the learning commons. It's getting closer and closer to being finished. We have, as you see, a new circulation desk. You'll also see four different areas sectioned off in that learning commons, four different huddle areas for students, different rooms that are in there. And that furniture is being put in as we speak in the learning commons. And you will see that the design of all this furniture has been very, very evident, that we've sat down and been methodical about how we're going to match things and what we think our kids are going to use. And I know Mr. Spencer enjoyed picking out different fabrics as we went through the learning commons furniture, but I think the kids are going to be very, very excited when they walk in that space. Above, that is the, believe it or not, that's an English hallway. You don't have where you're stepping into those little alcoves to get into the classroom. It's a straight shot, and that is a floor that's been waxed, ready to go. And on the bottom, again, that is another social studies room in that phase that's been complete. And again, I will tell you, throughout the district, every single custodian has lent a hand in every, in both of these high schools. If you go to Anderson High School right now, I've got a custodian for Mercer, I've got two custodians from Summit that are helping out with Anderson. And at Turpin, we get the same thing. We've got Wilson custodians helping out. So, our custodial staff has done yeoman's work again this summer. Last slide, this is the budgetary look at where we are. The bottom slide is August. As you notice, the Anderson High School, I'll point out a few things there. We are at about $4.6 million remaining for that project. I would remind the board that traveler's insurance is on the hook for the completion of this project. So, we are good to go with Anderson High School as we finish up that project. The good news, bad news for Turpin is, we're down to $945,000 in the budget for Turpin High School, which the good news means, we're almost done. We're getting close to Turpin High School. And I will tell you, walking through Turpin High School today, there were a lot of excited teachers there, ready to go, and the furniture was in there. It really is, it is a changed learning environment. I mean, everybody that's had a piece of this should be very, very proud because it looks amazing in there. So, with that, I conclude the facilities report.
Any questions? Thank you. Awesome. Human Resources, Ms. Conhan.
Item A, retirement.
That's a kind of badge.
That's one hour, maybe.
Look what you did, Mike.
I know. That's what they wanted to hear. They heard what they wanted to hear.
Item A, retirement of Bob Vanderwood. You just heard Mr. Preble speak a few minutes ago about Bob. And while this says eight years in the district, I want to remind the board that Bob has actually been in the district more than 30 years, but the first many of his years, he was here as a contractor. And it wasn't until about eight years ago that the district actually hired him. So, he probably knows the, well, not probably, other than Mike, he and Mike probably know the buildings here, you know, better than anyone in the district. So, we will certainly miss Mr. Vanderwood when he goes, but it will be a December 31st retirement, I'm sorry, resignation for retirement on January 1st. Resignations in item B. Item C is just the statement for items D, E, F, G, and K. Item D, change of assignment. Item E, appointments. And to let the board know, we are getting very close to being fully staffed for the year. We are, just have a couple of, like a study home monitor position, a paraprofessional position, so we're very close. Item F, special services appointment. And I will give you just a moment to look from pages three through 10, where you will see a number of items from our kindergarten, early entrance. Because we changed our date this year from September 30th to August 1st, we have had more than usual number of students, parents, who went through children tested for early entrance into kindergarten. And Mrs. Ryan and her team have been working on that, as well as quite a few other items. On page 10, item G, we do begin our assignment of coaches and advisors and consultants. And this also goes pages 10 through 13. And it's interesting that we start this with Toby Biederman, and we end with Joe Weschi, both of which were with us today at convocation with the Forest Hills Band, and it was just, it was amazing to watch all those students in there together. Item H, student teachers or interns. Item I, volunteers. Item J, a job description for accounting specialist one. Item K, substitute personnel for this year. And the staffing does remain at 806.32. And as a reminder to the board, we will complete the reconciliation in either the September or the October board meeting, depending on how quickly we can get people hired and get that number to you. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel items as listed.
Thank you. Any questions? Very good. Item 11, teaching and learning, student services, Ms. Ryan.
Well, Betsy's coming up, if I may.
Mr. Fruman, I would like to thank Tammy and her team for all the work that they've done over the summer to ensure that we have the best candidates in the state of Ohio working with our kids. So, Tammy, thank you very much. This is a lot of work, just like construction, with many, many things going on, a lot of certification requirements and things that have to be checked. And so, I appreciate that work, and I'm thankful that we have you doing that with us.
Item 11.1, we have a foreign exchange student at Turpin High School who's requesting approval. Luca Linia Noel Prus, I don't speak German, will be a student at Turpin. A resident host family has been selected for her, and she will be sponsored by Youth for Understanding. The superintendent recommends the board approve the enrollment of student Luca Linia Noel Prus at Turpin High School, and that the board authorize the waiver of instructional and school fees for her. Is this a consent agenda?
Yeah.
Do you want me to go ahead? Okay. 11.2, we have a motion to approve the resolution to contract with the Children's Home of Cincinnati as presented. This is an agreement for the placement of four of our district's special education students to attend the Children's Home of Cincinnati, and this is to provide more intensive special education services that also include mental health and behavioral support in their least restrictive environment. Item 11.3, we have a career cruising agreement. This is a motion to approve the agreement and the addendum for career cruising services for the period of July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019, as presented. And I should add that this is also, there has been a change in the, in career cruising to now what is called Zello. I think I've shared that with you in the past. It is actually with Anika Technologies for the subscription services, and it also includes the addendum that was also presented last school year, which really outlines, from our legal counsel, information in each of the sections that were noted in the addendum related to indemnity, confidentiality, and they are located in Canada, so there were some changes made to include Ohio laws and United States federal laws. So, that has been changed. The annual cost for the program's subscription is $12,641. This includes only costs for our middle school and high school. Elementary was rolled over for the 1819 school year as a complimentary year due to some technical issues with Zello and the transfer over to support our K to three and our four to six, four to five students in the, in the transition from career cruising to Zello. And I should add that our Forest Hills Foundation is supporting the cost of our elementary program through Zello.
Before we move on, I just, I want to thank you and everybody involved with that, because I think the addition of that program is really a good thing for our students. We've heard about similar programs to other school districts, and it's really great, I think, that we have this in our school district now and off for our students. And I know it was not without a lot of work to get it up and running. And as you mentioned, thanks to the foundation for some grant money to get it off the ground, but thank you.
Thank you. We're especially pleased with the rollover to Zello, and there's lots more to come, and we're very excited. 11.4 is a resolution to contract with Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau. This is a motion to approve the resolution with Belfair. This is to support a special education student for their, for their special education and related services for a student in residential placement in Shaker Heights, Ohio. And this is again, just for the educational services. Item 11.5 is our Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services addendum. That includes an annual, well, it's an addendum to the annual operating agreement that was brought through back in, I believe it was February of 2018. And this is for cost $12,730.20 to Hamilton County DDS to provide what they call Part C mandated assessments and evaluation for children who are under the age of three and are residents of our school district. And we are responsible to evaluate, but not service, our children under the age of three that have special needs. We are part of a consortium of districts in Hamilton County to evaluate, and we evaluate approximately 40 children a year through that contract. Finally, we have item 11.6. This is a resolution with Indiana Developmental Training Center in Lafayette, Indiana. This is also an agreement or a tuition contract to support a student placed at TC Harris School. at TC Harris School located in Indiana. This family student, just family just recently moved into the Forest Hills School District, and this is a residential placement. We support educational services only. This particular student will graduate December 2018. And I should note that legal counsel has reviewed and recommended revisions for all contracts that I've reviewed in this teaching and learning section. The superintendent recommends the board approve Items 11.1 to 11.6 as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Any questions for Ms. Ryan? Thank you very much. 12.1, Treasurer's Report, Mr. Giuffre.
Thank you. Item A, there are no donations for the month of July. Item B is a statement of board accounts. Items C and D are the, C, D, and E are the estimates of revenues and expenditures by appropriation and object. Bank reconciliation is Item F, which ties into the statement of board accounts. Investments, Item G, status of the portfolio as of July 31st. Item H is a restatement of a transfer from last month. We did not include special class centers, and those are kind of important. So I just restated it for this month so that it's very clear. Item I is the Board Service Fund for Board Expenditures. And Items J and K is the creation of a Student Activity Fund at Anderson High School and the closing of a Student Activity Fund at Anderson High School. That is all my report. And with that, I would recommend a consent of Items 9.2 through 12.1.
Before we do that, 9.7 was pulled from the agenda. That's the Pepsi Contract. Is there a timing issue on that?
No.
All right, great. So can we then have a motion for Items, what was it, 9.2 through 12.1, except for 9.7, which is not, was pulled from the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Giuffre.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Choice.
Yes.
And Mr. Fruman.
Yes. Thank you very much. Item 13.1, Business Advisory Council Report, Mr. Prebels.
We don't have one, but we do have a meeting that's coming up on September 13, so I anticipate providing a report next time we are together.
Excellent. 13.2, Policy Committee Report, Mr. Smith.
The Policy Committee met on July 19. We had a couple of issues to take care of, and I don't expect us to meet again. Actually, the board took action on that at our last regular meeting. I don't expect us to meet again until we get the fall batch of quarterly updates from Neola.
Okay, thank you. Human Resources Committee Report, we've not met, but we do have a meeting scheduled for, I think it's Friday, September 14 at 7:00 or 7:30 a.m.
7:30.
7:30 a.m. Item 13.4, Financing Committee, Finance Committee Report.
Finance Committee met on August 7. We went through a brief look at the five-year forecast, a little bit, we took a look at our 1819 and 1920 budgets. We spent most of our time reviewing a report on projected property TIPS. Our next meeting, I think, is tentatively scheduled for September 13, where we will go do an in-depth look at our five-year forecast.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, the September 13, I think we originally thought maybe 8:00 may need to be moved earlier than that because of some conflict schedules. So you might want to note that it would be at 7:00 that day, but that also could be another conflict with board member who, but I think we're going to be in that timeframe.
Tentative. We'll firm it up here with the help of Mrs. Monk.
And to that point, I just want to bring up, because it comes up about once a year, why we have these 7:00 a.m. meetings, is because we have jobs, children and families. So we do things like that first thing in the morning because that doesn't take into our job, it doesn't take into the evening, our family responsibilities.
Some poor person who's hoping to have surgery that morning and...
Yep, they will be. They'll still get it, they'll just get it a little bit later.
Okay.
13.5, Teaching and Learning Committee.
We have not had one, but we are all happy to note that, starting Tuesday, there will be teaching and learning.
Item 13.6, Safety Committee Report, Mr. Prebels.
Yes, sir. Wanted to remind the board that we will be fully implementing this year Social Sentinel. And for those of you who don't know what that is regarding safety and security, we know that the proliferation of social media finds some users posting harmful things on digitally. And so this is an organization that has specialized platform that reviews hundreds of thousands, millions of social interactions that are being used to try to find out if there are harmful things in there. And then they provide that information to the school system and to other entities who are involved with the program so that we can investigate and try to maintain safety in our schools based on information that they give us. It's all confidential, and it's done outside of the school. So we have Social Sentinel, providing us near real-time awareness of possible safety and security threats made on public social media. And remind you also that during the month of August, Forest Hills School District sent a team to the Threat Assessment and Response Protocol, sponsored by Child Focus, and it was facilitated and funded by Sandy Hook Promise. There's some new legislation out there, Legislation House Bill 318, which has school districts across the state concerned right now. And Mr. Eckert will be working collaboratively with Hamilton County Sheriff's Office to ensure that we fulfill all of the requirements set forth in this new bill. The House Bill 318 began as a bill to define the qualifications and responsibilities for school resource officers. As the bill progressed, the SAFE Act, which had started out in another bill, was implemented into this bill. The SAFE Act, or Supporting Alternatives for Education Act, the House Bill 318 addresses positive behavior intervention and supports, and discipline for violating a school's code of conduct and suspension of students in grades pre through K. And so there's some new legislation out about work that is permissible to be turned in even if a student is suspended. And we're going to be working with Mr. Eckert, our principals, teachers, to review that and make sure that we have our policy that is aligned with the new House requirements. And finally, I am happy to tell you this evening that Mr. Eckert has been appointed to the OASSA School Safety Committee from the state of Ohio. So we will have a representative from Forest Hills that will be representing our school system regarding safety and security issues across the state. And so those are the things that have happened between July and August regarding safety and security.
Thank you. 13.7, Forest Hills Foundation for Education, Ms. Stone. I register.
You did. Good.
Is this a microphone?
Yes.
Oh, wow. Cool. Okay. Good evening. The board met on August 8. We began work on our vision and mission statement. Our vision and mission statement was first developed in 2007. So we just thought it was time, because we also have a strategic plan task force doing some work. We thought the first step in that is to relook at our vision and mission statements. We have a committee that's met once, and we're going to meet one more time, and then pass that work on to the Strategic Plan Task Force. There's 13 members on that task force. These are all people that attended our board retreat back in June. So we're just keeping that work going. Also, Beth Davis from our workforce development, is now our Workforce Development Coordinator.
She's been hired by the foundation on a part-time basis to work with Donna Lawver, so they can get the workforce development, community partnerships, this whole program for the entire school district up and running. We are attending lots of back-to-school bashes. They're all this week. In fact, most of them are on Thursday night. All the principals plan it for the same night. But anyway, we will be there. And we are having a Destination Imagination informational meeting on September 17 at 7:00 p.m. That's for parents and students that might be interested in that program. Are the teacher grants, the first meeting is tomorrow. The first round of teacher grants will be awarded by mid-September. We are also hosting our annual PSAT practice test. That will be on Sunday, October 7 at 1:00 p.m. at Nagel Middle School. We get 200 kids in a room and give them a PSAT test under actual test conditions, so that when they walked into the actual PSAT that following week, that they have seen the test before, or something similar. And finally, our big gala event that Mr. Fruman alluded to will be on September 29. It is the Sware for Success. We hope everyone here will register for that. That is one of our biggest fundraising events, and the Forest Hills 5K, September 29 at the Anderson Center. People can go online to register. If you register before this Friday, there's an early bird registration, so it's a less cost if you register before then. And just finally, I wanted to let you know, we finally did the math and realized, over the last 10 years, we have raised over $1 million. All that's going back into programming that we do for all nine Forest Hills schools, so we're very proud of that. And just wanted to let you know that that's where we are.
Thank you very much for everything you and the foundation does. Any questions for Ms. Stone?
Thank you.
Legislative Liaison Report, Mr. Smith.
Last weekend, I had the opportunity to attend a National School Board Association, a national legislative meeting, where they invited the state president from every state association in the country to come together. And some of the top issues that they had, it's interesting to see, as the years progress, how these change. There's no question, at the top of the list this year is school safety. There was a lot of concern and a lot of information provided on what it's going to take to move people forward in the whole school safety area. Some of the other issues that always come up are vouchers and the lack of success at charter schools, legislative overreach at the federal level, although regardless of what you think about our current politics in DC, that actually, there is good news there because that is, the overreach is declining, I'll say that much. And the other area of concern is government takeover of certain school districts that are in academic distress, but that's still one of the fundamental principles nationally. There are a lot of differences state to state, but one of the fundamental principles is local control. And so there's concern when a state government or some other entity takes over a school board. Fortunately, we're not looking at that here, but it has happened in Ohio with Youngstown and there's one other, I can't remember off the top of my head. One of the other things I did want to mention is, one of the things that Ohio School Board Association is doing to react and respond to the concern about safety is, September 12, we're putting on, or Ohio School Board Association is putting on a School Safety and Security Solutions Summit. And I wanted to make sure we called it "solutions," not "best practice," because what is a solution in southwest Ohio might not work in downtown Cincinnati. So it's a full-day program that is going to bring information about safety and security for schools. We've got, I think it's 20 different organizations in the state have come together to put this on. And I was told that these organizations have never pulled together before because they've got other issues that caused them not to be able to work all together. But this issue was so important and so sensitive and so significant that, like I said, all these groups were able to come together to put this on and, like I said, hopefully come up with some solutions for school districts to be able to improve the safety and security environment in the state of Ohio. I did want to point out that the programs that I attend, for example, that national conference, Forest Hills doesn't pay for that. For anybody who happens to be concerned, I'm fortunate to have the Ohio School Board Association cover those costs in addition to the ones that I pay for. But anyway, that's a little bit of background on some things that are going on.
Great, thank you. And Item 13.9, the Forest Hills Teacher Association Report, Ms. Lawver.
Hi.
Oh, Ms. Benedetto.
Good evening. My name is Gail Garza. I am the secretary for the Forest Hills Teachers Association. Regrettably, Donna Lawver was not able to be present this evening. She has some personal family issues. She matters. She needs time to resolve. We wanted to thank the board for the opportunity to speak this morning at Convocation. It was a wonderful event. I think it came in and the faculty was well-supercharged, ready to go forth and face a new year. We always appreciate that. The band was awesome. It was a great event, and we appreciate the opportunity to get to speak at that and welcome back all the teaching staff and all the good things. And we look forward to a wonderful collaborative working relationship this year to facilitate that event. I'm the person hosting trainings for our building representatives and some of our new principal staffs later this week to help refresh people and bring on board new members to the building advisory and district advisory committee process. And I'm looking forward to working with all those folks later throughout the year. Thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to a wonderful year here at Forest Hills.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garza. Before we move on to Item 14.1, which is an executive session, our next regularly scheduled meeting is when? September 24, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. What?
24, yes, sir.
Right, yes. Okay. And we do not expect to take any action after executive session. Dr. Heiss, do you have a motion?
Yes. Pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section 121.22G1, I hereby move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee or official.
Mr. Giuffre.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Choice.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes. Thank you all for coming this evening.